Call, lead order, full call.
Mayor Westerberg.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Holden.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Is there anyone here who would like to speak in public forum? Neil.
My name is Dale Backman, and I'm here to present to the City Council, petition to the City Council of Lakeview for the purpose of the city-owned event center. We, the people who have signed this, do not want the city to own the event center without this going to a public vote of the people in the city of Lakeview. I have seventy-some plus signatures here, and I don't know who gets this, but I'm going to present to the City Council.
Anyone else?
Mike. I, as a lifelong resident of Lakeview, born and raised here, along with the power of citizens, would like to file a petition that we oppose the ordinance of the building code criteria. We wish it would cease any further action. Most residents that are building new or remodeling would on their own do a lot of this criteria without a third party interjecting. Um, it would be more horrible, you know, they do their own planning without the third party doing it. Um, all of you in the council, you know, you all moved here to this community voluntarily, and I don't know of a one of you that, you know, was presentable when you moved in. I don't know why you didn't want to change it now. It's, it's... I drove a two-and-a-half, three-block area prior to this meeting tonight. Twenty-eight homes in that two-and-a-half to three-block. Twenty-two of them would not meet your criteria standards. I'll start with Bob Lundgren's house. It met one, it was the overhang. Is there anything wrong with Bob Lundgren's house? Buzz Jewlich, same way, it met two standards. Jeff Ross's, Dee Blessington's, Dave Walton's, Bob Freeze's, Elder Lee's. That, that's the blocks I drove. Twenty-two of them, twenty-eight houses, would not meet the standards. Is there anything wrong with them? Not a thing. I, along with sixteen other citizens in this community, when we, when I first became an adult, we got an affordable FHA loan, government subsidized. None of these standards would pass. You, you wouldn't qualify for a loan back then. We have, most of us have improved our homes over the years as we could afford them. I mean, there's, I'm going to pick on Vicki because I think she was the spearhead of this thing. First home she lived in in Lakeview, it was evidently presentable enough for her. It didn't meet any of the standards when she moved into it. No overhang, no bushes, nothing. That was one of them FHA standards prior to moving into it. Her second home, up on Fourth Street, also would not qualify. As she got older and progressed in life, she got to into a nicer, newer home, new home. It does possibly meet all the standards. But I don't think affordable housing for a young couple moving into the community, what they're presenting is... It, it, it isn't right to impose that on other people. I guess I'd, I'd, I'd like to go on, and this is probably getting off the matter of the criteria, but it, it's had my gout for quite a while. I, as a Boy Scout when I was twelve years old back in nineteen-seventy-one, we planted evergreens out here in front of this community building. And I don't know what year it happened for sure, I didn't make note of it. Then, I mean, we as Boy Scouts planted them, we nurtured them. However, once, you know, the council decided that it didn't fit their plan no more. Used to hang Christmas lights on them. This year, we moved a tree in to hang lights on them. It, it just, it don't make sense. I mean, it, it did meet your criteria, so you removed it. Well, you know what? That was a memorial in the early days of the Boy Scouts. And my second one is, my brother passed away in nineteen-eighty-one. Nineteen-eighty-two, we come to the City Council and asked if we could put a memorial bench in the community building front yard here. And it was passed. Sometime after that, I come by and the bench is gone. I relocated it behind the city sheds. I come up here to the office and talk to Scott, what was going on. It didn't meet our criteria no more, our building design. But you know what? It was a memorial to my brother. It passed the council years before, but it didn't meet your criteria now. So let's reboot, without a question asked. Come in to Scott, and he said, "Well, we didn't know whose it was." Well, that's bullshit, because there's a plaque right on the bench. And he said, "Well, there's issues with it." Well, today, that bench is still in use in Carol Island. We went behind city shed, got it, and we moved it to Carol Island, and it's still sitting on Main Street in Carol Island. You know, so your, your building criterias are, I don't know, it's just frustrating.
Anyone else?
John, since I was singled out, I guess I'd like to respond a little bit. I don't have any knowledge of most of what Mike talked about, but the design criteria, I guess my only question to you is, how do you know these homes wouldn't pass when we haven't even decided what the design criteria is or how many of them would be required? Certainly, it has never been proposed that that whole sheet of design criteria would be required. So I just want to clarify.
I'm not saying either. You're, you're proposing six of them.
We haven't proposed anything. It's all been discussion.
It says right here on this sheet, six on one facade and two on the other.
But that has not been voted on, it has not been decided by the...
I don't think it should come to a vote. I think it should be asked before it ever gets started.
We're going to talk about that when we get to the agenda item. Catherine?
Um, I just wanted to clarify when you get to that item. The planning is, being on the Planning and Zoning Commission, um, we were struggling with what sort of di- design criteria were even wanted by the City Council. So we put that together, kind of an extension of a list from Canby, Iowa, where they had six. But it was coming to the City Council to say, "Do you want any type of design criteria?" And then it would be, if it was passed, then it would be kicked back. Maybe it would be three design criteria. You know, it, it, it was started out as six, because that's what we got from the city of Canby as something to start with. It became immediately obvious after a couple of meetings that this was going to be a long-drawn-out process for the Planning and Zoning, uh, Commission. So we thought, "Let's kick it back to the City Council. If they want us to pursue it further with more community input, we can. But if they didn't want us to pursue it at all, then it was not worth our time." So that's basically why it came here. Even though it says six to begin with, that was initial why it came here. Just to get an idea, the City Council wanted us to pursue that any further.
Vicki, do you have any more?
No.
Okay, since then, agenda, any additions or corrections?
No.
motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Full call.
Holden.
Yes.
Mulder.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Okay, we're going to have the budget request. We'll start with the trustees. We're not going to take any action, just come up and tell us what you want, then we move to the next one.
Hey, I'm Eric Hawkinson, President of the Lakeview Board of Trustees, and we're requesting from the City Council and the mayor a two-point-nine percent increase for the twenty-twenty, twenty-one-year budget. Um, this increase deals with paying raises for all staff. We are eagerly awaiting the bid letting of January thirtieth with this prospect of starting our expansion project in the spring and having completion by December first of two thousand and twenty. The expansion project is the main reason for the salary increases. Staff will be dealing with some noise and challenging conditions through the construction. Since we try to stay open with a few exceptions, those exceptions will be a demodesty inside wall. Uh, we continue to meet the criteria to be the top-third tier of public libraries in Iowa. This ensures us the maximum amount of enrichment Iowa funds. We average over eight-hundred-and-fifty library visits a month. The library offers two children's programs weekly and a summer-long reading program, which are all well-attended. We hosted two adult speaking events this year. Bill Jamerson and Dr. John Quinn had outstanding attendance. The library added a fifth public access computer this year, and there are two book clubs and window-display coffee hour held at the library each month. Jigsaw puzzles are, are, are ongoing popular activity for several patrons. So with this, I'd just like to bring our, our wishes that we get a two-point-nine percent increase to our budget request. Thank you.
You ready?
Yeah.
Okay, Community Club.
Hello, I'm Lita Olson with the Community Club, and, uh, I would like to thank you for your past support of our advertising budget. And, um, to let you know, you've all got the packet current.
Yes.
That has everything in there. And you'll see that we have two new, uh, places that we are going to advertise, and one is Travel Iowa Guide, and the other one is Iowa Bike Guide. This will increase our budget by a thousand dollars. Last year, we paid almost sixteen thousand dollars in advertising, plus we hire an event coordinator and a marketing coordinator. They're very, very helpful in all of our, um, and, um, we feel that advertising Lakeview is very, very important and beneficial to the whole town and everybody in it. So this year, we would like to ask for fifteen thousand dollars. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Lita.
Thank you.
Matt?
Hello, I'm Brent Muddenberg, I'm the President of the Hometown Pride Committee. Um, we do not operate on budget normally, but this year we are requesting fifteen hundred dollars. Uh, the money is just, it's unspecified at this point. We have no particular project that we go towards. It would just be, um, seed money to help start on some of the projects that we do work on throughout the year.
Brent?
Brent, that was Karen Short.
So many points?
Got one extra point for that.
Yeah, I might take this up too, thank you.
Uh, so I'm Aaron Brotherton here for the golf course. Um, I was here two weeks ago to kind of pitch, uh, to you, and last Monday, I know we, you guys had a meeting, and I listened in to that. Um, you guys had some concerns. I know Tammy brought one up and, and Vicki another one. And so Tammy, you're, you know, you talked about it being a slippery slope, uh, as far as other businesses asking for money. The difference is, we're a five-one-C-three, uh, so we're a nonprofit. Uh, no private person would ever benefit from profits at the golf course. So i- it's a little different, you know, than giving money to a privately-owned business for someone to benefit off. You know, and it's like the facade program that you had set up for businesses on town. I mean, that, you're giving money to, to those businesses to, to upgrade their... So it's a, it's a little different. I can see where your concern is, though. Vicki, you know, you talked about some pushback from, from non-golfers. Everything, every decision down here isn't unanimous, and so there's, there's certain pushback with everything that, that you pass. So, um, anyway, that's all I have to say on that. Um, so I know I, I mentioned ten thousand dollars being the amount that we were looking for. But I, I mean, that can be negotiated, I just, it was a number that we, we wanted to start at. So, um, you know, it's, Lakeview gets to offer a golf course without having any of the financial liability that that golf course would have being in town. Um, so I guess it's up to you guys to decide whether it's important enough to, to keep that golf course kind of going. So, thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Just that the Housing Trust Fund made that written request, it starts on page thirteen, packet. Now, this is, this is the Housing Trust Fund through Region Twelve. We have utilized the Housing Trust Fund for projects in town, and, uh, they, they are seeking a thousand-dollar match again this year. We have funded that thousand-dollar match the past couple of years. And, uh, also, they, they have announced recently competitive, uh, grant rounds for the funds, uh, from, from the, uh, Regional Council, uh, Housing. And, uh, that will be open here within the next couple of months, about being able to apply for grants on that. Would, would suggest funding again of the Housing Trust Fund.
Same thing for council?
That's a new one. You know, when you look at page sixteen, you see that this, this is the Centers Against Abuse and Sexual Assault, and, and this was just a written request that we had received from their Executive Director. And, uh, request, many cities there say are donating between five-hundred and ten thousand dollars, but they're asking at a thousand-dollar level.
Okay, okay, discussion on the community center that we are, we want to partner with the, uh, University of Iowa?
Yeah, just an update on, on that, as far as any, any planning would go, is that the, uh, through our Hometown Pride Code, Kathy Everett-Cathy had, had been involved with some projects from the University of Iowa. It's, it's a, uh, capstone project for senior engineering students who take on a community project somewhere. And, uh, Lakeview's been identified then as a potential project, then for, uh, as a project for this upcoming spring. So have the, have access to this University of Iowa student to come in and help us with some of the, uh, design criteria, the, the design, uh, ideas behind a potential event center. So when we talked about this last week, we had a planning session, we were talking about the community center. I know there's, uh, still, you know, certainly mixed opinions on that, but we were discussing, uh, about get, doing some adequate investigation, coming to the stage where we would have, uh, enough information to truly present a proper proposal to the public. And that's really where we are tonight. I guess I would, uh, just open that up for council discussion area.
Um, I, I, obviously, maybe I wasn't clear about my position last week, um, so I guess I'll repeat. I'm not in favor of a community center if this, if the majority of the community does not support it. But I, I feel like I'm not sure of that, and I don't know if anybody is. And I, I felt like previously, when the issue was raised, that it should have been allowed to go the course of determining if it was a feasible project. And I feel that way yet today, that I think it should be a feasible project. Um, I think we need to do the homework to find out if, one, how much would it cost? What kind of funding can we get? And even if we get all the funding to build the facility, you know, um, what is going to be the operations? What are the costs of that going to be? Um, and I felt like we needed professional help to get there, um, without spending a lot of money, per se, um, in the, in, at least in the initial stages. It just felt like we didn't do it that way the last time. We, we fell into a pit, and, and maybe the plan was too, um, expensive, obviously. But, um, you know, you never know until you get into it and, and exactly determine. So if you determine this is too expensive, what if you do this? And what are the needs of the community? You know, is it a wellness center mixed in with it? You know, we have a wellness business here, can they be incorporated into it? I just think there's a lot of unanswered questions. And the young people, do the young people support this? Because they're the ones that will, will see the most benefit in this, probably. So I would just like to make a motion to instruct the city administrator to work with the Lakeview Hometown Pride Committee, which is where I think this project should run through, um, the Great Places Committee, and now with these Iowa Student Design Team to thoroughly research not only the design, but the construction, the operations, and the financial issues associated with the community center. To such an extent that we can give the public, prior to going ahead and voting this in, that we can give the public a, a proper presentation. Um, this is what we think we should have, this is what it's going to cost, this is how we anticipate to run it, this is how we think it's going to cost. I just think you have to give the public accurate information, and we don't have it yet. And so all I'm saying is, I think we should gather it. We put it in our application to be a Great Places, um, community. We were chosen based on part of that being in our, our goals, and I think we need to at least do the research for that. So I'd like to make a motion for Scott to work with the above as mentioned.
Second?
I'll second.
Full call.
Tom.
Yes.
Mulder?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Holden.
Yes.
Reese.
I'd like to see if this part's over. I'd like to, I'd like to know the cost of that universe, what that's going to cost the city, and who's going to, like, if they come up, and how long they're going to be here, and who's going to house them and all that.
I don't say anything about, uh, so, uh, it's a thing, right?
It's, there are, there are no costs associated with it now?
And I, I, I being against the event center myself, as far as the city owning it and the city operating it and risking taxpayers' dollars on it, especially when the, a lot of taxpayers don't want the thing. To me, this is a good way to present it so everybody can have a educated opinion on it when it gets done, at no more cost to the city, because we've already spent ten thousand dollars on a study that didn't look very good the first time, so...
I guess that's my, I'd like to see some figures for, uh, our sake.
That's what you're going to find out.
That's what's being...
That's what we're going to do. Okay, ordinance five-oh-four. This is our third reading of the sewer rates.
Yes.
Need a motion to approve?
So moved.
Somebody must be a second.
I'll second it.
Full call.
It's a tie.
Yeah, it's a tie.
All right.
Full call.
Reese.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Mulder.
Yes.
Walton.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
It's the third and final reading. Ordinance five-oh-five. The grant with Mean?
Yeah, so we had this opportunity in regards to our wholesale electric, uh, supply contract, that, uh, it was written into the contract that we could take a proposal from Mean about providing a s- a three-year extension then on that contract, which we have done. They've given us that proposal, the proposal, uh, looks pretty good. So our, our existing arrangement with Mean would expire at the end of May in twenty-one. So what they've done is extended that from three years out from there. So the pricing is that for the remainder of calendar year twenty-one, the price remains the same for what it was at the end of the, of the, of the, uh, contract rate. Then for the next two subsequent years, it increases two percent per year. We've had, uh, had our, uh, consultant, Marlon Burvis, review this, give his opinion on this, certainly on board with this, and, uh, would recommend approval. Where's Bill?
Bill, it's a bargain to the city, right?
It's, it's an excellent deal. We've been working on this for a long time, but the market's low right now, now's the time to lock it in.
Do you think, Bill, they would have, do an opportunity, if we would have an option that we could pick up two more years after that and actually make it into a five-year? Could that be something that should be presented to them? Because I don't think you're going to see anything, uh, lower than two percent if it does well. But we're comfortable with this, maybe, so I'm just wondering if, if we have a two-year option to add on?
We, we tried that, uh, Whitey.
Yeah? They want to do it? Well, okay.
I think we're just really fortunate to have, we're the only utility that they put in the contract to offer us a three-year extension.
Okay.
So it's the best you're going to get, and it's an excellent deal. And Mean's been an excellent company to work with.
Okay, well, we said we can, we can, I guess.
So the new contract, I had emailed out to you all. The ordinance to implement the contract is on page nineteen. And with Means out of Nebraska, they, they run things a little bit differently. I mean, you pass things through, uh, through an ordinance in this case. So, uh, this does require the three readings of this ordinance, and if the council is ready, we could consider three ordinance, uh, three readings tonight.
So, full call.
This is for the first reading, now. Okay, Walton?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Mulder?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
We need a motion to...
Motion to waive?
So moved. To read? Second to a three? Full call.
That's the motion to waive, so it's, uh, uh, Walton?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Mulder?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
One more, so we have a motion to finally approve ordinance number five-oh-five.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second it.
Full call.
Mulder?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Walton?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Okay, we're going to consider a building permit application from Mean and Jenny.
So the building permits, they're on, on page, uh, permits on page twenty. You can see the designer on twenty-one, twenty-two, floor plans on twenty-three. Compliant with, uh, with our, our code as we, as we are today. Now, the, uh, uh, the building is in commercial zone. So it does propose the use of corrugated, uh, metal, which is permissible in, in the commercial zone.
So raise all the pictures in the packet.
Make a motion to approve?
Say. Full call.
Tom?
Yes.
Holden?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Mulder?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
So we need to consider the access easement?
Yeah, let's consider that access easement, so let's flip to page twenty-four, and you'll see how the, uh, building sits on that lot. So that's the white rectangle and how it sits on the lot. But, uh, you want to talk about that a little bit, Jimmy, about where you're at?
Yeah, well, the building, uh, yeah, is on the south end of, of my lot there. And I need access to the back of the building. So I, I would like to be able to drive off of Fourth Street, you know, straight off of Fourth Street, uh, have, uh, easement there that I can access the back of the property to get in to the door in the back of the building. I think it's a good place to put it, it's straight out before the street. Uh, there's also, oh, a fire hydrant right there, a big electrical box, um, sewer cleanout, I believe it is, and then also a, uh, storm sewer in the, in the gutter there, uh, that I don't think you'd possibly develop right in that spot, because it'd be, cost quite a bit to move all that stuff. So what I'm, I'd like to just ease my right right alongside that, by any future developments on that area.
Seems like a good place for it.
I, I only have one question on that, um, that parking lot that we proposed, Scott, that doesn't interfere with this?
No, it, it wouldn't. It does not come that far to the south.
I didn't think it did, but I wanted to make sure.
So, but just, I guess, uh, one thing on this, just, we, we would define this area based on Fourth Street, and it's actually be, would be twenty feet south of the center line of Fourth Street. So that would, uh, that would be that, uh, definition. But what we would do is, is if we can instruct, uh, the preparation of formal easement, we do, that's really, be where we're at right now.
Second? Second?
Second.
We'll call.
Walton?
Yes.
Mulder?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
That was almost painless, was it?
Yeah.
Talk, talk through your third issue then.
Okay, I do have one more issue. When we first purchased the land, uh, when we were looking into it, we thought the property was 100 feet wide. It would be where the center of the tracks were, uh, the train tracks. Yeah, that was the 100-foot mark. Turns out, it's, the property's only 75 feet wide. And that puts us, where I wanted to build was like at the 80-foot mark. And if I have the setbacks, I think it's a, what is it, four-foot setback on the 75-foot line, that gets me pretty close to the old pot farm plant and the green building. I think it's within 19 feet. I guess I would like to possibly build right on the property line, which would give me a little more room to possibly drive in between there, and we'll just center it on the property, it'd look better. Just wondering if I could do away with setback on the east side. There's plenty of room between that property line and the water plant. I think there's probably, oh, 30, 35 feet, maybe?
So if you look at, yeah, at that picture on page 24, you see where the lot lines are. And that, that's pretty accurate depiction of what that would be. So, you know, the question is, you know, ultimately, can you build on, on the, on the east property line there? And we do have provisions for how that can happen, and it happens through a variance provision through the Board of Adjustment. Okay, the other thing that Jimmy had, had talked about is, would the city all be interested in giving easement to a portion of that city ground? And whether that's five feet or, or some other distance there that would be an easement area for Jimmy, but it also double, double then setback?
Would that have to, have to go to the Board of Adjustment first?
If you, if you can build five feet from MEAN, I think it'd be fine.
Bill, if that goes to the plant, would that cause any issues? Guess I'm asking you to look into your crystal ball, but I mean, what's the worst thing that could happen, I guess, is what I'm trying to say.
If the new plant's bigger?
It's hard to predict the future.
Because everything seems to get bigger.
But you're not going to build on this easement, right?
No. I'm just, I'm just, I, maybe if I could put some bushes in there to make the side of the building look better, you know, just...
Would that be next to the rain garden?
Sure.
So we're not out anything, if we're just going to pour cement on it, just?
Yeah, it would be pouring cement on it. It'd just be, to get, get more centered in the property and, you know, get, get farther away from those other buildings. Which, you know, close buildings, it is kind of a fire hazard, be a close to, but farther away than...
I can't see where it would hurt anything if it's not being built on a city property, just once in a while.
If we would have the Terry Bushes left, we'd have to get over it.
So what you're asking is just to make your city property look better?
Yeah.
How long, how long is the easement in place?
What's that?
How long is the easement in place?
You know, typically, they're perpetual easements. Okay, but they shouldn't have to be.
You don't want that hanging over your head either.
Yeah.
I'd say it's perpetual.
Yeah, if, we'll, we'll work towards preparation of an easement on that, it'll be considered at the next meeting.
We can't act, there's no, the council's on, we're in that way, thank you.
Thanks, Jimmy.
Thank you.
The building looks really good.
Yes.
Yes, it does?
Okay, the, the next agenda item is, we're not taking any, uh, any public input. It's the council has been asked by the P and Z to give their, what they want to do, so that's the only people we're going to hear from. They're looking for guidance on regarding residential design standards. You want to say anything, Captain?
Just, just what I said before, this question had come to the Planning and Zoning Commission. We had a lot of discussion about it, we got, we're wondering what other towns had, and got a design criteria from the City of Candy, which had a lot of things about houses and garages and setbacks, and then lists of criteria. We decided that all those garages and various ways of putting the garage in front or behind, that, that was kind of overkill. And so we thought we would increase the list of design criteria, start out with their thing of six on the, whatever is the front side of your house, and two on if you face another street. But that's just fluid, and what we wanted to know from the council is, do you want some sort of design criteria? And we tried to make it so that most houses being built would be able to fill these in or already have them present, and maybe it turns out to only be four criteria. If you pass this, maybe it's two, we don't know. But we came up with that list of 20 to begin with, and figured that this could be for any type of residential structure, whether it's a house, whether it's a, what do you call it, a shome or a shouse, or whatever you call it. And we didn't want to waste any more of our time, we didn't want to, you know, have the next building season come and have people all wondering what was going on. So that was basically our question, if the city council wants us to pursue it, then we can pursue it, get more lists of design criteria, have people give input on whether it should be four, three, five, six, I don't know. But I will have to agree that when I drove by some of the houses that you would consider houses in a neighborhood, they may not have had all six, so maybe six isn't the best number. But before we get into what's the best number, and what way do we go, and then spend all this time and bring it to the city council, we figured, does the city council want us to pursue this? That's basically what we're looking for.
I guess in my opinion, um, to reiterate what we just heard tonight, and all the feedback I've gotten on this, a side rope, don't fix it.
I think the thing that came up was the fact that some of the shouses that were being built in neighborhoods looked like, um, like little work buildings. And in it, in the city code or whatever, it says that it should fit in with the neighborhood. So many of the shouses, which look like workshops, do not fit in with the surrounding neighborhood. So instead of sing, singling out, just people building shouses have to do these design criteria, whatever number we come up with. It was that anything should, so that it would look like it fit in with the, the neighborhood, because we just got questions on, on that.
I, I can see it, I can see it going into a new development where you have a neighborhood, what do you call those?
Subdivisions.
Sub...
Subdivisions.
Conventions, yeah, I'm sorry, that's, that's the word I was trying to think of.
It wasn't, it wasn't to set down that you had to build your house a certain way. It was like shutters, decorative lighting, some plants, maybe some windows, so that when you drove by a place that was put in a, a neighborhood that already exists, it didn't look like you had a machine shed, a house, a machine shed, and a house. Even though that machine shed had some living quarters in it, externally, it looked like a machine shed. So we, we wanted to have, we were asked initially to try to come up with something so that maybe there was something that looked like an entryway, or a covered porch, or some extra windows, or some trim around the windows, or something like that, so you would get the idea that it was a home in a neighborhood. Whether that was a separate development, or if somebody sold some houses in a neighborhood here, and somebody decided to put up a shouse, we wanted to make sure that it kind of fit in with the design of the whole neighborhood. And it could be just random designs, but something that made it also look like people were living in it. That, that's where this, this came from, basically.
Since, since I've been pretty vocal about this, and I changed my mind, I think six design criteria is probably a little too much. I, you know, I've been to every P and Z meeting, I, I never heard any number specifically said, other than the fact that, you know, it was negotiable. And when you say if it ain't broke, don't fix it, well, I, I'm telling you, I think it is broke. Because when the facility went up on Horseshoe Drive, that changed, because people that built homes in the 1940s, 50s, whatever, they built their homes with the design criteria of that period. And when you look at it closely, most of them comply. Most of them got overhangs, most of them got trim around the windows, most of them got a porch, or some kind of, or they've got 15% of windows on the street side. I mean, I, I think you're, you know, the, the opposing side is trying to make all, everything that's on that page, or six of them fit. I think they can easily fit, if you're building a house, most people would use some kind of design criteria. So I don't think it's going to cause them any, any hardship at all to say, well, yeah, we're doing five of these or four of these anyway, so this isn't a problem. If you're building a shed, then you're going to have to build it as cheap as possible, and you don't really care about the design criteria. And, and a lot of people probably don't care about the design criteria, but a lot of people do. I've had a lot of people talk to me that they don't want that next to them, and they're worried about their property value when they go to sell. And it's a, it's a legitimate concern. I don't, I think we don't need six, eight, 12 of them, but I think we need some design criteria, especially as more people are going to put up shouses. And as I said before, there are people that don't want shouses in inside-city limits. This is a compromise between two opposing forces. And work with the P and Z on how many design criteria are required. And I think it should be houses or shouses, because the facility on Horseshoe Drive could easily be a house.
So, so let me ask you, is, is there any other facilities other than the one on Horseshoe Drive that you're concerned with, that you would throw into that category?
I think that's the first of many.
Okay, where's the many, I mean, is there any others besides that one?
Dave, are you going to wait till there's five of them, 10 of them?
No, 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 I, I want to know, is there anything other than that one? Because even before you ran for council, you didn't like that one. So is there any others than that one that you're talking about, that you want to change the whole building, um, structure for anything that's built in the city? Why don't we keep it to just shouses and focus on that? And if you want to design, uh, criteria, make it to shouses, and invite somebody that has vocalized against this, like a, like contractors, for example, to help give input?
Well, they, they, they've been at the P and Z meetings. I've been at every P and Z meeting, we've had contractors there, we've had the opposing parties there, we've had people that, that want the design criteria there. They, um, they, we've all been at those meetings. The facility on Horseshoe Drive is certainly built within our current standards. There's nothing wrong with it based on our current building criteria. So I'm not saying that facility should never have been built, I'm just telling you that now it's been built, and people have concerns about it, and do they want one of them in, in a lot next to them? And they're worried about it, and rightfully so. And when you talk about shouses, you could build that same facility and live in 100% of it, and it could look the same.
What if we take a house that has more open space and garage than it does living space? Make those people adhere to some of these things? Would that be the middle of the road? That way you're not making everybody do it?
Oh, it was, it was just putting forward because we didn't want to single out a particular group of people building. So if you are building a traditional-type home, you're probably going to have a certain percentage of windows. You may put shutters on them, you may have a covered porch, or a deck, or you may have the bottom part of it be like fake brick or something like that. So many of the houses that would be built in any of the builders around here would meet more than six of those design criteria, probably. Or at least they'd meet three or four of them. But the idea was not to just single out people who were going to build a shouse, but to say, we didn't want people who wanted to build a shouse. And it turned out that part of that reason was to get around, around the fact that if you wanted to have a shed with a big enough garage door to park an RV or a pontoon boat, you had to be within 200 feet of your house. And many people do not have that sort of land adjacent to their house. So the shouse, um, got around that by being able to put living quarters inside a place that had, that could have a big, high garage door. And then it could be a living home, whether you were living in it full-time, or whether you had it as a rental, or whatever. But you could park your RV, you could park your pontoon boat, and you didn't have to be able to build that within 200 feet of your house. So with that idea, it was like, that was a way to get around the building code of being able to put a real high garage door, or put a shed. So then it was, well, if we're going to have more of these being built, because it seems that there are several places going up, one on, was it Lakewood, and one right next to the place on Horseshoe, which are being built kind of as shouses with the large garage doors in them, that maybe we should just have a few criteria, um, so that people couldn't circumvent those rules or zones in the city. And we could say, okay, it was the same for everybody. But if you build a house, you're going to have three or four of those criteria automatically.
Mary and Jack, uh, here too, Auntie Catherine, you, Tommy, you're getting close to it. Uh, any, but generally, people that can afford to buy these shouses with these, uh, big, for their pontoon boats and jet steers and everything else, generally, these are people that have the money to add on some of these trim factors that we're talking about. I think Mary had brought that up at one of our very first meetings, and I applauded her before that, because that's, we're not talking about real expensive things here. We're talking about things that, you know, several builders have said, well, that wouldn't cost that much to put that on, or that on. You know, just even windows in the garage doors would be a big improvement, and that's one of the criteria. Two tones of color, you know, there's so many things to work with, but we have not, as a group, been able to sit down and even have that discussion, because everybody's convinced of what we're doing, when we don't even know what we're doing yet, out there on the street and getting signatures and everything based on false information, and presenting it as God's truth, and that's not the situation we're, we're in tonight. We're in a situation where we're asking, do we want to go forward with this? And we do, we would very much like to go forward with it, with your blessing. But we don't want to go forward and have us to spin in our wheels, and everybody say they don't want it. So that's where we are tonight.
And if, I don't know if that picture's on there, but I, if you look on YouTube, or on, I think it might have been YouTube, or Pinterest it was, there's a really cool bifold garage door, which when you look at it, it looks like a regular eight- or nine-foot garage door. But the whole structure bi-folds up, and you have, right on your house, and you have this side which looks like a regular garage, it bi-folds up, and you can pull your RV in, and when it comes down, it looks like you have a 10, eight, nine-foot garage door. I don't know how much they cost. But it's probably less than building a separate storage facility to store your boat or your RV and put a house on it. I just thought that was a, just a cool thing that people maybe had never even seen. And I thought, gee, you know, if you had an RV and wanted to put that right on your house, you could get one of these bifold garage doors, and it comes up, and you pull your big RV in and out, pretty cool. But anyway, that's...
I think, is there someone else going to say something?
Why didn't you tell me eventually?
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Well, if I'm going to say something, I'd like to make the motion that we instruct the P and Z to continue with their work on this.
I second it.
We'll call.
Mulder?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Walton?
No.
Reese? Thank you.
Yes.
Keep working. Okay, now we're going to have to consider a moratorium on construction. I think that's not a good idea for what you.
Yeah, that's a pretty gray area there. I guess I'm looking for some.
I also, um, I wish that prior to giving the city attorney instructions to research a moratorium, that it would have been given to the council first to vote to see if we were in favor of a moratorium. Instead of, I, I just think that was a total waste of money, and that should have been brought to us first. Just want to make that statement.
That's a no, Vicki?
That's a no.
Anybody else?
You've done some research on it?
Yeah, there, there's, uh, been moratoriums, uh, passed by Arden County as far as wind turbines, and in Iowa City for, uh, issuing building permits to residential housing for remodeling into rental units. So it, it does have a precedent in Iowa. And, uh, it has not been challenged, from what I can see legally. And the commentary amongst people that have thought about it or looked into it say that it would be very difficult to challenge a moratorium, because you're actually, the council is just preserving the status quo until they can develop design criteria, first of all, make a definition, as somebody pointed out, as to what a shower says, because that's a new term, at least here around Iowa. They have them in Missouri, um, down around the Ozarks. So it's been, it's been addressed in other states. So it wouldn't be difficult to come up with a definition of, of, uh, zoning classification for a shower somewhere along the lines of what the mayor mentioned, which would be some kind of racial of living quarters versus garage space. We'd have to refine that a little bit. So the council would be able to pass a moratorium, uh, not to accept any, uh, building permits for, uh, a shower. We would have to come up with a definition of what that is.
And how much is that going, how much is that going to cost?
In what respect? Attorney fees?
Well, I, attorney fees and filing fees, and I, I'm not sure what all is entailed in them.
But it doesn't matter if we're not.
We're not going to do it. I think you guys can come up with some criteria quicker rather than later. I, I just can't see it unless you get a motion from the council, I think it's, we're not going to do that.
We have a meeting tomorrow night.
There needs to be more work done on this, so we know what we're.
You guys are doing a good job, I just, a little bit farther, I think you'll come up with some.
It was just a petition that had gone around and presented to the planning and zoning, and we needed to then send it to the council.
We had enough.
I think people in the community that are opposed to these things have a real concern about this. So, you know, we have people on both sides of the fence here. And so, I guess, to the council and the PNC to try to figure out what's the best path. Um, I, and I'm not, I don't know whether we should have a moratorium or not, but I just wasn't, I wish it would have been presented to us prior to engaging the attorney.
Well, it was just last planning and zoning. The petition was given to us, that people had signed for this moratorium. We didn't say to do it.
I understand.
And so then it was our job to pass it on to the council, and show that there's a group of concerned citizens.
I understand.
We're just going to let that go. We'll move on to ordinance five oh six, certificate of zoning compliance.
Yep, so, uh, we'll look at, uh, come down page twenty-seven. Call this a certificate of zoning compliance, you could also consider it somewhat like a certificate of occupancy. It's a, uh, a certificate done at the end of a construction project that says the construction project was done according to what the building commit had stated. And really, that's, that is the, uh, the intent of this. We would have our building inspector be, be the person who is responsible for, uh, for doing this. This is done when the building is defined as substantial completion. And, and then, uh, the person comes in and says, I'm substantially done. And then the, uh, the building, uh, inspector gets out there within ten days and, and takes a look. There can be, there's provisions in there for temporary certificates of zoning compliance, and they can, they can be issued for twelve months. Concept there being that, that not all, uh, construction occurs quickly. And that especially if someone, say, is building a home, living in part of it, while they're still working on other parts of it, it can be, uh, be done for a period of twelve months. And, uh, with that, that is the recommendation then from the planning and zoning commission to pass an ordinance on the, the certificate of zoning compliance.
I'll make the motion to approve that.
Second?
I'll second it.
Who called?
Moller?
Yes.
Toms?
Yes.
Holden?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Do you want to just do one reading?
Let's do one reading.
Okay. Okay, resolution two zero zero eight is establishing fee for our zoning compliance.
Well, yeah, this is the one for establishing fee for the zoning and compliance, uh, certificate. Within that ordinance that we just passed, the first reading of it says that the fees for that certificate are established by, uh, by the city council. So this resolution addresses two things. It addresses what the fee would be for the certificate of zoning compliance, and then it also addresses what the fee would be paid to the building inspector for going back for that last, for that last visit. Just, uh, again, on, on our building inspector, uh, currently, for most building permits, it would cost a hundred dollars. For, um, decks and structures under a hundred fifty square feet is fifty bucks. But for most structures now, it's a hundred dollars, and you pay the building inspector sixty dollars based, uh, for, for all of the, the building inspections that are, that are done. This ordinance that we would pass would propose there'd be, that we would pay the building inspector additional funds. Okay? So you could look at saying it would cost the applicant X number of dollars for a, uh, a certificate of zoning compliance. Uh, the other way that I'd take a look at it is, right now, we, we charge a hundred dollars, we have sixty dollars to the building inspector. I'd just, uh, suggest that maybe we would just turn that extra twenty dollars around to the building inspector. It ends up being eighty dollars when they issue the certificate of zoning compliance.
And then he has to make more than one trip, most chances.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
And, and instead of passing on additional costs to the building?
Yeah, there would be, there'd be no additional cost then to the project. Um, it's just an additional twenty dollars to the building inspector. Bearing in mind, of course, that the building inspector position right now is vacant, so.
I guess I would go along with that. And then when we hire a new building inspector, I guess, if, you know, if that's an issue or a problem that we're not paying enough or whatever. I mean, we just gave the building inspector a raise not too long ago, but I guess that would depend on some input from the person that's having to do the inspection. But I definitely think we need the zoning compliance, and I definitely think the inspector needs to go out there, because we've had issues in the past where the facility wasn't built the way it was set, or there was a question on the road. And, you know, the building inspector's already made multiple visits. I know that Kyle was out to Van Carts quite a few times, and, um, and actually kind of followed up with all of it anyways. So I just think we ought to at least pay them at least twenty dollars more. So I guess I'll make a motion that we pay them twenty dollars more at the present time.
So what if, what if they don't get our certificate? What, so it's a penalty? I mean, is there a penalty?
There is. Failure to obtain the certificates, a violation of the zoning regulations, and then we do have a penalty within the zoning regulations for, for non-compliance, and I think it's fifty dollars a day.
Okay.
Making your motions, resolution two zero zero eight with twenty dollars?
Second.
Who called?
Toms?
Yes.
Holden?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Moller?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Kristen Carmen, still here.
I got her.
Would you like to say anything? Or just say, oh, yes?
Don't write the check to her. Do you want me to say it?
I just, I might, those are my options.
Chris, uh, hey, they have given this application for what will be our new, uh, business property improvement grant program. Everything is consistent with what we would like to see happen through the grant program. In this case, it's some facade improvements, and some repairs to the, uh, things, some repainting, that, that type of stuff is all, uh, considered through the grant program. It's, uh, permissible uses. Everything's in line, other than the application should have been submitted prior to doing the project. But, uh, with that, everything else is fine.
You need a motion?
Yes.
Make the motion to approve, but again, reminding people that they need to apply first.
Second?
I'll second it.
Who called?
Really looks nice.
It does.
Moller?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Holden?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Toms? Yes.
Okay, this is procedural. This is, uh, resolution two zero zero nine. This is for region twelve.
Yeah, so here with, with our housing rehab grant, we started the first projects now. There's three projects that are pending. We do still have two other policy statements that we would need to have the council approve. Remembering, of course, these are all federal dollars, so there's, uh, I don't know, a dozen or more seem like policies that needed to come along with this. These policies come to us through region twelve. This one's on page thirty-three of resolution adopting a code of conduct.
So, motion is on two zero zero nine?
Yep.
Second?
I'll second it.
Who called?
Holden? Reese?
Yes.
Moller?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Toms?
Yes.
You need another motion on the affirmative fair housing policy?
Yeah, the next one's the affirmative fair housing policy.
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Who called?
Moller?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Holden?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Toms?
Yes.
Okay, we motion approve the grants, draw number one payment to region twelve.
Yeah, so I think for region twelve, we'd like to see us to have all of these approvals done, done by council. We're approving the submission of the drawdown of the state funds, and then also approving the payment to region twelve, two thousand seven hundred fourteen dollars.
Your motion approved?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second it.
Who called?
Moller?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Holden?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Toms?
Yes.
Okay, we're going to talk about development of four oh eight main. You're up first, Jennifer. Tell us what you plan.
You don't want me to start from the beginning, right?
No, no.
Okay, like, you've already heard that.
Heard that.
Okay, so, um, we kind of hit an abrupt halt, and we begin to move forward again with finding out information. And we talked with Carla Janning with the region twelve, and she has kind of helped guide us with tools of direction based on her experience and her projects in the past, on which way to go or not go where we're at right now with this project. So she is saying not to use the catalyst grant. This project is way too big for the catalyst grant. And, and directing us more towards at this time, that CD BG housing grant, or that grant, which is a five hundred thousand dollar grant. Um, she also had some other things in there. She, um, started us with the performa, because that's been my question when we were told that this is an eight hundred thousand to nine hundred and fifty thousand dollar project. I'm like, well, no one could afford to make that cash flow. But with these grants and some other things, she showed us that, yeah, there is a way to make this cash flow. So we plugged in with the information that we currently have, which is not completely accurate, doesn't have the exact numbers which it would have to be whittled down to. Um, she said, showed us how to push it around. She said it would definitely end up being a big job. Um, she said, unfortunately, our contractors that I'm all used to working with, this is way too big of a project for them. And the thing with going towards this grant, um, the criteria for this year hasn't even come out. It doesn't come out until February nineteenth, I believe, is when she gets the rules. Then you can start picking some information and getting some more, saying, well, this has to be built this way, this has to be done this way, and so on. Um, so then you can get better pricing on where you're going with it, um, to make sure it still fits in the performa. Then, let's see, she kind of gave us the timeline, and she said, they are really far behind than where they normally are. She said, normally, we have already applied for this grant. She said, so this is backed up. She said, the normal timeline for applying for the grant is May first. And she says, so that's going to back up a couple more months. And I know everybody was pushing, um, back when we started this, back in September, to chop, chop. This is not going to chop, chop, happen quickly. So if we're looking at June or July for even applying for the grant, they are going to take, she said, generally, the next May through August is normal. So she said, September, October, before you even know if you're one of the qualifying people. She said, there will be nothing done between the application and that time. So we're backing up again to even October, before you know if you're approved or not. So I just kind of, um, wanted to let you guys know where that was. Um, my biggest, um, reason for trying to make this project work is because I don't want to see our town die. I love our old town. I love the improvements we do. I don't want to see an Odie Bolt thing where I'm from happen, where all the towns are, or buildings are torn down. We want business. We want people here. We, the community club brings in great events, keeps things happening and growing, which I hope to do. Um, and like I said, if there's another person that would work better towards the catalyst grant, has different ideas, that is a hundred percent fine with me, um, because this is a lot of work. And I don't want to waste my time or anybody else's time with this as well. So that's just kind of where I'm at. We're talking another good nine months before we know anything, as in, there's still a whole lot of ifs, ands, or buts that can make or break this project.
So, did you give me any kind of idea how, what your chances are of getting this grant?
She said, with what we have gotten her already, she said, she loves it. They would be very happy with, so far, the direction we are going. Um, she said, we would definitely need an architect to do the full, full thing. That's fifty thousand dollars, just that. She said, but that would definitely be, have to be part of this. Um, let's see, what, she said, parking is going to be an issue. I know we've, this crazy, um, with the way our streets and stuff are done, and, but I said, you know, when I leave the bar and close the bar at midnight, there's maybe one car on Main Street. So I'm like, I know, um, paint is getting another run, and there'll probably be, is there four apartments? Two, three apartments? So there'll be possibly three more, so I see adding parking spots in the back. I said, but I think with current situation of parking, even if you add three more residents, and with what Terry has, there's not many cars to park out front of your, out front. So I'm like, I don't know if that's a huge issue, because the workforce, people living in the apartments hopefully would be at work when the businesses, my businesses open, everybody else downtown, and then when the businesses are closed, you have... So she's very concerned about the parking, and she's saying that the two and a half blocks away, that parking that you're going to add, which will be great, is not going to help the grant. Um, so she's still very concerned about that. She also let us know that there is a Davis Bacon, um, wages, something that puts a top. I was thinking originally nine rentable spaces. And she said, we need to stick to six. She said, otherwise, that takes off that grant, that, um, she said, otherwise it won't work. Um, so we've talked about, you know, shortening up the building, if we could add two parking spots. Like, I don't know if two parking spots helps when you have six apartments either. Um, I know you guys have discussed with the farmer's market as well, having winter parking. Well, maybe you should make it full year parking, if you, especially if you decide to change how that parking is on that street. And, and just, kind of different options, because I don't know how you deal with that. Not something to talk about later if we even get that far.
I have a couple questions, Jennifer. So is the, is for this particular grant, and I'm a little, I'm somewhat familiar with a little bit of it, um, is the parking a criteria for this grant?
She said it would, she didn't say it was a criteria. It's something that they look at when, I don't know if it's a criteria or not, but it's something they will look at. If there's no parking.
Because I, you know, she talked about doing that for Nate's project too, and I don't ever remember her talking about the parking, so.
Well, catalyst grant might be different than this other grant. Well, catalyst grant might be different than this other grant.
No, she talked about the other grant too.
Okay.
Um, so.
But she said it would not get approved.
My other question is if you get through this and you don't get that grant, are you still gonna have some interest of doing a scaled down version of something or not?
Well, I was still.
Or if you don't get the grant, are you done and you're walking away?
Like I said, I'd have to do a Performa on it to see how much you could stick into it to make a cash flow. So also part of this, this current grant, she said it would have to be done in stages because I said I wanted to do that storefront rentable space. So we still had business downtown. She said that would have to be done separately. It can't be included into the whole price. And she said basically that's paperwork and pushing numbers around and making it where the money goes.
I think we have some people that are looking for a regional space, so.
Yeah. She said it just, I don't know, she said funding, it has to be separate paper wise. She said it could make your contractor crazy, but she said that don't, it has to be separate.
Thank you.
Jennifer, your plan, Plan B is taking the back half off and start over there and rehab the front?
Yes, we also talked about some of the contractors that we tried to get information from up front, you know, they all walk in there shaking their head like, oh my gosh, where do you start and how do you make this work with the current building, knowing there was a fire there, what you're gonna get into when you start partially demolish, or demolishing the building? Where do you go? So most of the carpenters all want to start fresh new. So we didn't know how that fits into, can you still get the grants if, as someone suggested, leaving one brick? So anyhow, we looked at the building and how it was built and had a contractor currently look at it and say, that can be done. We also had somebody that could demolish the building. He said, yes, we can take this off here, pull this off, leave the front and then try to make it historical and get in the front or make it look better. Kinda keep with that. So that's kinda where we're at now with Plan B or C or wherever we're at with this.
At least you have a plan.
Well, we're moving in a direction, I mean, it's not that fast.
Your intention on the front is to keep it historical looking down?
Trying to, as best possible. It's not gonna cost an absolute fortune, you know, it has to, to work financially. I was going to go to see if the, do they have pictures of what it used to look like originally somewhere? The library or?
Yeah, probably the library.
Somewhere.
We can find them.
That would be good, cause that'd be nice to know. Cause I can't imagine that blown on whatever, that nobody knows what it is, that cement is what it really originally looked like.
Yep, Sean can find it if anybody else can.
Okay, that would be, that would be great.
Museum or in the resort.
Okay, perfect. That would be nice to see and add to our information that we're getting.
Okay.
Any other questions? And like I said, if you've got somebody that can move a lot faster than this project is, you know.
You're not talking about?
Okay, great.
Don't leave.
I won't leave.
Let's move.
So I'm Chris Oak from the dental clinic. We've become a Lakeview to practice dentistry since 2004. We've come to a point where we need to expand to continue to grow. We purchased 413 Main Street, which is the building south of the Iowa State Bank with those intentions. However, after trying to lay out a dental clinic in that space, it became apparent it's not big enough. It would have to be demolished and rebuilt to work at a dental clinic, which can be done, but I struggled with that as the building is still sound and it would work, you know, very good to have a different type of business occupy that building. Across the street is the vacant one that we've been talking about tonight. Over the years, several people have tried to rehab that building, yet it's, today it's in your possession with, you know, failed attempts. My dad used to drive cars until the wheels were bald. Yet he realized at some point that you cannot repair that car anymore. Unfortunately, at some point it needs to be junked. And, you know, the unfortunate thing with that building is it's, it's pretty close. So I'm kinda here to present a win-win proposition to the city. I would offer to trade you the building, the 413 building for a buildable lot on the former site of the 408 Main Street building. To make that future clinic more ideal from a width standpoint, I would also like three to five feet of the market lot, which is a lot north of that. And then I would also like the future right or refusal of the city ever decided to sell that so they could build right next to it because all the windows of the operas would be facing north towards the bar just to get natural light in there. I feel like the city comes out ahead because there is a new business moving in downtown. Obviously, we're just on Vine, so we're street over, but this would actually move us, you know, into the downtown area. And it would also give the other building across the street, you know, you could also utilize that as a building for a future business. Currently, we have the USDA money loan sitting at a bank waiting to go. We just don't know which way we're going, so I guess we need some direction from you guys. So at the end of the day, the decision is, you know, which side of the street do you want the clinic on? Do you want the west side at the former 413 Main Street building with 408 still standing, waiting for another rehab? Or do you want it on the east side at the former 408 Main Street building, you know, with a marketable building across the street? I hope you choose the latter on that. I gave you kind of the rough sketch of what the building would look like. That's on the other side of the street, but that's kind of what we're thinking of doing something along those lines. Obviously, since we have decided we don't know that design for sure, but that's just kind of a rough design of what we had hoped to put down there. Is there any questions?
Well, if you give me a farmer's market empty lot, if you take your vote.
I still got the same problem. Still got that building next door that we're gonna do it. And then I can't put, then my windows are gonna face your fence. So then I would definitely go back to across the street and turn that building down and start there where I would go.
I have a question. If you, if we were to agree to do this, are you willing to sign some kind of an agreement with the timeline in it or, you know, I realize you can get into construction delays or something, but some kind of a, an actual timeline with, with a deadline?
Well, I can start tomorrow if Terry does. I mean, we, we honestly haven't been sitting in a counter right now waiting, but I haven't designed it because I just know, I'm not gonna spend the money to design one way and then you guys are like, well, you can't do that. So we're kinda waiting for a design. That's why I'm waiting, you know, kind of to hear what you guys have to say to see.
So when did you decide to look at 408 Main?
When did I, when I was talking to Chris one day, when I asked him what was going on with that building and he said it needs to be torn down and then the light bulb went off and I gave him the thought of Scott. So was it probably a month or two ago, I would say?
Because you, you got the revolving loan, what, about a year ago?
Yeah.
I just wondered, because you didn't see that, that building as viable, is that kind of what slowed you down?
Well, it wasn't even for sale at that time, I don't think.
No, the building you own?
Oh, it was for sale, it was downtown, yes. That was why we picked that one out at the time, because we wanted to stay in Lakeview and that was the only problem.
I know, but you've had that building for how long?
Um, I honestly don't know. I would say probably two years. Probably. Around there's a lucky. But then we, we were waiting for the USDA loan too. That didn't come through until, I believe, last year sometime.
If the city tears it down, you know it's gonna cost in excess of $30,000.
What was the good, what was the good?
His loan was thirty.
Thirty.
And you're, but you're also gaining it, so that building that I'm in right now has got a tax value of $38,000. And the one that you're tearing down has a tax value of $13,000. You also had agreed on the 413 to give money to tear, help tear that one down also. So.
Yeah, my only concern here is, is that you've had the, you've had the building that you own for several years, much longer than two. And you haven't, and a year ago it was announced to us that you had this loan. And, you know, so I know for at least two years we've been ready to see something happen there and I guess that's why I'm concerned about the timeline. That's where my concern is.
In construction, nothing moves fast would be the first thing. A lot of time we're having trouble with designers down in construction. The guy that used to work for Downing Construction who he used to use, he went with a different firm. Then we had a lot of trouble finding someone else. So at the end of the day, we finally went across the street and used Aaron to help come up with a sign, which he has done. But again, we haven't pursued that much more because we don't know which direction we're going.
Okay, thank you.
So if, if we went with your idea, worked on the building and traded you a lot for your current building, you see things speeding up and you'll actually?
Well, I could, I could get a design and then get estimate and go. I mean, that's, you know, it's building construction. It's not an easy building to build because dental clinics are, lots of plumbing. So, yes, I mean, I guess.
So you'll have a timeline?
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
And if that timeline's not met, I mean, go have a timeline to present to the council as part of the deal, so to speak.
That you're not expecting the city to pay the cost of demolition?
Which one's that?
408.
Or, you know, a buildable lot?
Well, that means we would have to tear the property down. The city would.
Thirty thousand though.
Yep. Yeah. But we would be, but you gain two buildings, you gain, so you're sitting at 408, I mean, regardless of where I go, Terry, either it's gonna be a new building at 413 or it's gonna be a new building at 408.
I have information that I received from someone that you can also get grants for tearing stuff down as the city. And you can reuse the material, for example, without having that much cement in there, if you can crush it somewhere and put it somewhere, you can get funding to help pay for those costs to tear that down. And the tin to be reused on another building and to reuse what's currently there. I know that they discussed that kind, I don't know the specifics on it, but I just can't even remember what he called that kind of a grant. And he said that's not something that the city can't look into.
That's interesting. Has had some vision there.
Chris?
I do have one thing to say about 408 Main. The only thing about it that concerns me is the fact that the integrity of the building is being compromised the longer you wait.
Right.
Because there's water washing underneath the sidewalk that sits between my building and that building, it's washing into the basement of 408 Main. The sidewalk in between there up towards the street side of Main Street has dropped four to five inches already. I do have some fractures that are starting to start in the corner of my building and I don't know how much, you know, damage has been done to my foundation already, but that would be my concern is that it's, you know, it's causing some damage to my structure possibly, the longer you wait.
I thought the other thing on that, taking that building out, the looking forward.
No, it's a lot.
Fifty-two and thirty.
So.
So if we put together that proposal on paper in front of us, so we could actually see what it looks like.
Yeah, because actually there, I know there's, there's gonna be at least two other things that we would, would wanna take a look at. And the first thing does deal with asbestos. We had all the asbestos abated out of that building when it was gonna be a rehab project. So we never did test for anything related to the, so we need to, we need to have the testing done on the looking materials and see if there's any asbestos that would need to be abated. So gotta do the inspection and testing and then potentially the abatement if, if required, if there's some there. Then the other certificate you talked about today, Doc, was what?
The.
An environmental clearance.
An environmental clearance. So they were worried about if it ever been a printing press or something like that. They're worried about chemical contamination of the soil for the grant. When I talked to Jim Gossett, he said usually it's just a rubber stamp if it's, you know, it's been just an old building. He does not see a, an issue with that at all, but that would be the only other thing. And depending on what you said tonight, I was going to have to have a look at, into the, you know, the lot and see if there would be an issue.
And that was something Carla brought up to us as well, would have to be done for that same, that grant we were talking about.
So I would say that, you know, we, we asked them to come present tonight and, and potentially to choose a party that we would work with on this because of the timeline of what that catalyst grant is. Pre-applications would be at the end of the month. Fact is, nobody's looking at using that catalyst grant now. It would seem like that we would want to do some analysis yet as far as the city, as far as, and get that, probably get that asbestos inspection completed and know what the weight and cost would be. And we can look at that, at that option then, knowing really a comprehensive picture where the costs are gonna be.
Yeah, I'd like to have that right in front of me, back your proposal and everything right in front so we can see it.
Along with those costs of the asbestos.
Right.
What do you ask before, Dave? I guess I don't understand what you're, you're wanting.
Just so, just so I have it in front of me, you know.
Of, of the everything on your building looks?
Your proposal, you know, we got, we have this, but your proposal of.
Trading property.
Trading properties, the cost of the demolition, the asbestos, well, I need to look at something on that column and then.
Timeline.
Timeline. So we get this done, get this completed, when are you gonna start? Okay? So if we go down that road, we demolish the building, are you gonna be ready to start construction as soon as that's done?
If we, I mean, if we're going that direction, yes, I can do a play. I mean, if we have the ducks in a row, yes.
Yeah. I want, I wanna, I wanna see all those costs and everything in front of me to make that decision. Does that make sense?
Reading comprehensive proposal.
Exactly. Right.
Yep.
Clear the mud to everybody.
Call the waiter, Scott.
Hey, I can see my number. I got a lot of what they already want, so maybe not that far.
Thanks, thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Okay, and street project. You set a bidding date?
Uh, first I had directed page thirty-seven in packet that, that shows the proposed streets. When, when they all presented to the council, well, then, during our fee assessment, you know, a month and a half ago, these were the streets that, that you proposed to include in a project. So we have got a cost estimate back from a contractor and it's right in the ballpark of where we, we thought that we would budget. That's $200,000 for total project and to do these one, two, three, four, five, you know, ten, ten-ish blocks. And these $200,000 is, is the proposed project cost. And as we talk through some of the budget numbers tonight, you see that that's feasible. And so what I would ask is for your endorsement of the project tonight and to set a budget. The bidding date would be February twenty-seventh.
We have that motion, so.
Second?
Second.
Go call.
Wolfman?
Yes.
Moller?
Yes.
Steinkin?
Yes.
Reese? Tom?
Yes.
Okay, Drummond Hicks, best friend number eighteen.
How's that project going out there? Contractor with the electrical, how's it moving forward there yet?
Usually about one to three guys.
Huh?
Usually about one to three guys are out there.
They've been paying the subs.
So there's, again, I think there's some positive steps you might hear. I did talk with, with contractor again today, get an update about where they are on construction. Still working on some electric with the anticipation, you know, they, they told the electricians that they wanted them done by the end of January. And that is still what the anticipation is, that the electrician will be done by the end of January. The contractors, they're putting drop ceiling in, in the, in the lab room so that they can come finish up the, the HVAC work. Commenting that they're, they have dug right up to the, outside the manhole at the old plant. So, you know, when you look at remaining work, a lot of, a lot of the stuff that they're getting to now, the point where they're getting at, will, they won't have a whole lot of stuff they can continue to work at while the weather is, is poor. So, but they, so they're right outside the manhole at sewer plant and then in the spring work, they'd look at boring the road and making those two connections. So, but they, so they're right outside the manhole at sewer plant and then in the spring work, they'd look at boring the road and making those two connections. Then they're installing pumps, aeration system, UV, which in that stuff would happen as the preparing could start in the spring. Now, the, I guess the good news out of all this is that working with their bond company, most of the suppliers and subcontractors are paid, okay? What they did was sent out releases to all of these folks to make sure that everybody was on board with what the, the amount was. And they asked for releases from the contractor. People provided those, they've been paid. So waiting for release back from Martin Marietta. Talked with them about the crop damage payments to the landowners. And when I talked with them on Friday, the bond company goes, well, geez, I never heard anything about crop damages to the landowners. Okay, so I worked with, with the landowners and talked them, them through everything again. We got the, talking with Drummond Hicks then, again, this morning, they said, ah, come on, they, they've had this information, okay? But, so really what happened is we do agree that, yep, Drummond Hicks submitted this information, came in, in the form of one handwritten sheet about that it had everybody's damages that were due, somewhere along the lines, this gets dropped in the process. But then as of today, all landowners and the one tenant farmer, their, the checks are cut to them today or tomorrow. All of the outstanding stuff that we're aware of is the rest.
Do they have a motion to pay them? Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Wolpert?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Wolpert?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Okay, budget preparation.
All right.
Set it up.
Yeah, can, yep, will you take two minutes to write there, Mayor?
Take some of my. Well, in case somebody told you, you should get a big job.
All right.
We're ready for budget preparation.
Yeah. As far as our budget discussion goes tonight, it really is just some, some work in preparation of, of our budget workshop that we're gonna, we're gonna have our budget workshop next Monday, so it's twenty-seventh would be the, the date when we would review a comprehensive budget. Tonight I'd like to discuss issues about debt service and stuff related to cost of insurance, and then we'll discuss property taxes. So on page forty-three is, is our listing of debt. And a couple of things of note are really, really that a couple of our issues are paid off. So that Boulder's, Boulder's TIF, general obligation, we make our last payment in June of 2020. Now with that also, we, we had an arrangement with, with Fay up at, up at Chodden's that she was reimbursed a portion of her, of her hotel motel tax that she'd been paid, okay? Equivalent to the amount of assistance that was given to Boulder's for the construction, okay? Since we're paying off the debt, that, that assistance to Fay then would, would cease then as of the end of, of June too. I talked to her today, it, she'd be paid for her quarter through the end of June, so that occurs sometime in July or August. Uh, the other one that's, that is finished now would be the, finally, the old sewer SRF for the, for the wastewater treatment plant. That's, that's all paid off now then too. So looking at our, at our debts, the street GO, six hundred fifty-five thousand dollars still outstanding on that. This is the one debt issuance for which we draw property taxes. Okay, so that's paid for partially through property taxes, partially through some special assessment. Because that, that, within that GO also includes the Sunset Drive project, which was all special assessment. Sack Beach GO, you see that we're coming up to the end of that in June of 2023, so we're down to the last three years on that. The electric FEMA from December two thousand twelve, we are still paying on, on that debt issuance. You see those amounts that, we also have this new electric revenue from two thousand eighteen. So we, we do still pay on those separately, but you see the totals on the, on the debt service, forty-seven, nine and eighty-five thousand. Firetruck, two thousand nineteen, debt issuance there, we'll be paying on that for another ten years through twenty-nine. Then the SRF for the, see that none of the amounts are filled in there because we continue to draw. But now it is up over six million dollars on that. See, our, but our payment for next month is established. We are paying principal then for next year. We're actually paying ten thousand dollars in principal this current year, but next year it goes up to one hundred thirty-three thousand. And in subsequent years, it actually increases quite a bit more than that on our principal payment. And then the water SRF, the thing of note there is that the last payment is in June of 2021. So we're gonna budget the last payment out of the water utility when we do this budget. That'll be the last one that we're budgeting then. And we had some concerns about the financial status of, of the water utility. But if we don't have to pay this debt service, that'll, that'll help us out in year two. Not this, not this budget, coming budget year, but the year after. The internal sewer jetter loan is paid, the internal water tower loan is paid. We are paying off this last of the, this internal TIF, paid off, will pay off that last eighty thousand dollars. And that's a reimbursement to our electric improvement fund. Couple notes there on a constitutional debt limit. So we could, we could have general obligation debt of equal to five percent of the total valuation, which could be seven point four million. And our total debt, total GO debt's eight hundred ninety thousand, so we're at twelve percent. And that's a real good, real good ratio to have as far as debt. Lots of space there in case there ever were a catastrophic emergency. Page forty-four shows our insurance costs and really more good news for, for on, on insurance. Last year, we had the, the insurance services and, and we chose to stay with ICAP. You see the cost there at forty-three too. Really no, no significant changes to the policy are anticipated. With that current cost, you see we did include that substation cost, so that's included in, in that cost there too. Just budgeting an eight-two percent increase, so total's about forty-four thousand. And work comp, total premium this year is twenty-eight thousand. We would expect that our, our mod factor's gonna go down and it is at one point oh five this year. And we would anticipate it to go down somewhere around one. Couple of that reduction with three percent wage increase, it's pretty close to a wash, uh, should be a, a little bit of reduction. So twenty-seven, seven, um, work comp. And the health insurance, actually our costs for health insurance this year are substantially lower than what they, what they were last year, our budget amounts. Because of that, that twelve percent premium, it was eleven point some percent, uh, premium reduction as of the first of January. So we're seeing that in our, in our new budget then for next year. But see the projected cost there for the January through June of, of twenty twenty-one, last six months of, of the next fiscal year, that I did still budget a twenty percent increase. Not having any idea what that would be, but you want to be pretty conservative about the way you budget for health insurance because you just don't know what happens to that. Terry, at the bottom of page, total current insurance costs that are budgeted for this year were two hundred ninety-seven thousand and we'll look to budget next year, two hundred thirty-five. So that's a pretty attractive numbers there on the insurance. Any questions on debt service or insurance? All right, let's take a look at some things pertaining to property taxes. Page forty-five shows taxable valuations. You see what's happened to our valuations then over time, they do continue to rise. From this current fiscal year to the budget year next year, we see we were at seventy-six million going to eighty-one million. So that, that difference there being five million dollars, seven point five five percent increase in valuation for our property values. Now you can see how that compares to the other communities in the county drastically. How several other communities had negative growth and we're seeing growth here at about seven and a half percent. One of the main reasons like folks would see that negative growth is because the rollback's gone down, so we'll, we'll talk about that. That, that has an, an effect on especially the small communities that don't see any new, new value. Before we go too far, I'd like to point this sheet out to you that was at the desk tonight. I, I didn't email this one to you, Vicky, but this is, this is the breakdown of our values per ag and commercial and industrial and multi-residential.
Oh, yeah.
And this is just informational for you, but you can see what our, what our breakdown is. If our total value is eighty-eight million dollars, out of that total eighty-eight million in taxable value, seventy-two million is residential. So our eighty-one, eighty-one point five percent value is residential on here. And looking at, at commercial, eight point seven percent and industrial, seven point one percent. Look at those commercial and, and industrial ones, the top line there, looking at the commercial where it's six point two three eight million, that's non-TIF dollars and then non-TIF valuation. And then the second line's TIF valuation, one point four million in commercial TIF. And then you look at the industrials, one point four million in non-TIF and total TIF valuation there, four point nine million dollars. And I point that out to you really because we have one more year to be drawing that TIF revenue off of the VACO project. So that value, that industrial value there will be released back into the, into the general tax asking. We won't receive the taxes, the TIF dollars, but we increase the value for our general. So I'm back to the council packet on page thirty-six. We talked through that top part. This is the page entitled Property Tax Scenario, where we're comparing the current year versus the next year budget year. Looking at total assessed valuations, that's a hundred percent values, one hundred thirty-six million dollars this current year versus then one hundred forty-nine million next year. But the taxable valuation is the, is the number we use for computing property taxes. It's at seventy-six million dollars this year and we go to eighty-one point five million dollars next year. Residential rollback does go down, okay? So during this current year, on your house, you are taxed at fifty-six point nine one eight percent of the value of that house. The tax, so if you get a hundred percent assessed value, your taxes are fifty-six point nine percent of that. Next year, that rollback amount goes down. So now your, your house would be taxed at fifty-five point zero seven percent. One point eight four four percent less in residential value this budget year versus next year, just simply due to the, to the rollback. Commercial and industrial properties are, are all taxed at ninety percent. And then we do have this multifamily and this is from that state law change here a few years ago where this keeps going down. It goes down three point seven five percent every year until the multifamily rollback is the same as residential. So this year, for this current budget here, seventy-five percent goes down to seventy-one point two five percent then for the budget. So that's why you, you could take those numbers, say for multifamily, you can compare it against the total amount of multifamily value that we have. See that rollback has a little bit of impact in town, but not, not too much because we don't have a whole lot of multifamily value. For the spreadsheet then, I give you three different options that, that we would take a look at. To, if, if we said we want our general fund dollars to remain the same as this year, that's the top scenario. If we want general fund dollars to increase by two percent, that's the middle. Or if we said we would have our total tax levy be the same again this next year, that's the bottom. So, you know, what we've done for twelve plus years now, I think, is we have kept the, the tax levy the same. We've levied at eight dollars and forty-five cents per thousand for like twelve years. And, but the, the tax dollars, of course, continue to rise as property values continue to rise. So as we discuss property taxes this year, just know that, that the last general assembly for the state had made a law change about this. The biggest impact is that the city's got to have this additional public hearing and public notice about what our tax rate's gonna be. So, so we do need to establish what our maximum property tax asking would be. Then when we look at that though, there's, there's a second part of that law that comes into play. And, and the law says if, if any of these taxing entities would increase their, in our case, general fund tax levy by more than two percent, the city council would have to approve the budget by a super majority, four out of five instead of just three out of five. Okay, practically speaking, it doesn't have a whole lot of impact because usually a budget approval is unanimous. But it's really a philosophy from this state regulation or the, the state code about this two percent. So that's why, why I gave you that number there, if you wanted to see what it was in regards to, if you had a two percent increase in tax dollars, that's what it would be. So let's take a look at this. First thing to, to point out for sure that we only have two tax levies. We levy a general fund tax levy and then we levy debt service. Okay, debt service is outside this two percent cap thing. You levy whatever you need for debt service, and in our case, it's only that one debt issuance. But this year we were, we levied for eighty-one thousand, next year that does go up a little bit, goes up to eighty-four thousand to pay the debt service on that street project. So then it's, it's looking at general fund dollars is really what we're looking at. So if you said, I want my general fund dollars to be the same, next year is what they are this year, it's five hundred seventy thousand, five hundred seventy thousand next year. And then what that is, is a reduction in the, in the tax levy, goes down by forty-six cents. You said, I want our general fund tax dollars to increase by that two percent. We're at five seventy now and that would go to five eighty-two. But that, even though the, even though the tax dollars are increasing, that is still a reduction in tax levy. Goes down thirty-two percent. Now if you said that you would like the total tax levy to be the same again next year as what it is this year, that's a total of eight dollars and forty-five cents. Where we were at five seventy for property tax this year, go up to six oh seven then next year. But the total property tax levy remains at eight dollars and forty-five cents. So that all, clear as mud about how this all comes together? What's that? So, look at them. If you flip two pages, it's actually page forty-eight in fact. This is that public notice that would, that gets published in the paper about the city establishing our maximum property tax rate. Now, one thing to point out there is it lists all these tax levies there in the middle, and you can see that we, lots of communities might use more than just the general fund levy. We only use the general fund levy, so we're gonna publish this, and it's gonna give total tax asking for the general fund. The unique thing about this is that the debt service levy is not covered under this thing. We're gonna publish this and say our tax asking's gonna be this much money. Debt service is outside of this, so a debt service will still be an additional one too. So it's really confusing, I think, for the public. But it's one of these things stipulated by the state about how that would come together. So with that, I answer any questions that you have on property tax in general. Otherwise, I wanna point out this one that was at your desk tonight, and this is the stuff that I did email you then, Vicky. What these few sheets are is actually some summary documents of a draft budget. And I put that together so that you can see kind of the big picture about where we sit on everything budget-wise, and how your decision on property taxes then would come into play. So note that this is the draft budget, and this includes that two percent level for increase in general fund property tax dollars. Any items that are included in year one of the capital improvements plan are in the draft, including that Camp Crescent project. So I put that in there at a hundred seventy-five thousand dollars, proposing that one hundred thousand dollars would come from the general fund and seventy-five thousand from sales tax. You see also the other things that are proposed in this draft about the budget requests that were funded and whatnot, okay? Of course, this is a guideline, just for illustration purposes only, but then as you look at that, let's flip to the next page. The next two pages are year one of the capital improvement plan, just FYI on that, that if it's included in year one of the capital improvement plan, included in the draft of the budget for these summary numbers, okay? And no big changes here at all. We've went through that a couple times, took out a couple things last time, and that's really about the only change. So then, flip to the next page, which is the revenues versus expenditures, and you can see where this draft budget lines up for each fund, about whether there are ample revenues to cover the expenditures or not. And, you know, don't get caught off guard by a lot of the fact that a lot of these show a deficit in any of those funds because we save up money to do projects. So yeah, from time to time, it looks like we might be deficit in those funds, but we're doing okay. The one that I would point out to you though, I'm gonna point out two things to you. The first one is sales tax, where that one is deficit a little bit, but the main one is general fund. Where based on that two percent increase in property taxes, this says that there's deficit of forty-four thousand dollars in the general fund. Now, flip to the back page there, and you see what the fund balances are. So these are, top line there, beginning balance is seven-one of nineteen, that is the bank balance from any of those funds for, that's the actual bank balance. You can see we reestimate revenues and expenses for this current year, and then include the projected revenues and expenses then for the next budget year. And then the highlighted line there would be the projected ending balance, six-thirty of twenty-one. So the one to point out there specifically is general fund, that this proposes, this draft has a deficit of forty-four thousand or whatever, but it does have a significant balance there to where you still have four hundred thirty-one thousand dollars in balance.
Because of what we carried over?
Yeah, that's the carryover balance there, yep. So the issue here is that you would propose, this draft says there's a deficit in the spending in the general fund, but there's ample money in the balance to cover that, and that this is largely due to that Camp Crescent project. Again, there's a hundred thousand dollars that's put in to be funded out of the general fund for that project. As you think about property taxes, you'll think about how that impacts the general fund, and of course, also knowing that we're gonna go through our budget here next week, where we're looking at expenses and knowing that there's be some expenses served that would be reduced also. So the object here is that we've got to set a maximum tax rate, gotta set a maximum tax rate, and then we gotta publish notice of that, we gotta publish that notice, and hold a public hearing. That public hearing would be on the seventeenth of February, where we'll hold a public hearing on taxes turnaround, set a public hearing on the budget that same day. So with that though, we would need to be able to establish a maximum tax rate, okay? I will tell you that if you wanna digest this a little bit, we could also do this during budget workshop session next week to set that maximum rate and still meet our publication times, so. Otherwise, we could, you can decide tonight what you'd like the maximum tax rate to be, remembering that maximum is maximum, so you could set maximum and go down from there if you would choose.
Just, I think I'm pretty clear on this. If we want to keep the tax levy the way it is now, and people would see no difference in their property taxes other than if their assessment went up, that would be at seven percent?
Yes, yep, that is, that's that seven percent increase in values, yeah.
So we both have it stayed at the eight point four-five. If we could do that, that would be the max, that would be publisher.
Right.
I'd agree with that.
Yeah, then we're consistent with thirteen, yeah.
Right.
But it's gonna look to the public, I mean, be prepared to explain it, I think, because it'll look like an increase, I think, to them.
It is an increase in dollars, and that's the way that it will look on the, in this public notice, it'll look like that too. It's an increase, because it is an increase in dollars, even if the levy stays the same.
But we don't have any control over the assessment part.
Yeah, that's true. It's all decided by.
I don't know, I just think I'd like to think about this a little bit, but so we, and you've got examples of two percent and what was the other one?
You know, just, it's either zero, two percent, or keep the levy the same.
And so why, could you give us a scenario for five percent?
I sure can, yeah.
I don't know, I'm just, I guess if you leave it at seven percent, which is the eight forty-five, is that right?
Right, yeah.
How much is that gonna increase their property taxes? I thought, is that not gonna increase it at all?
Total dollars go up seven point five percent. Now, and then it has everything to do with everybody's personal assessment, now understanding that virtually everybody got revalued last year. So some of it, folks are gonna see a little change. If you keep the levy the same, folks would see some change in their property taxes.
So I guess I'm a little bit confused about the seven percent is gonna keep it the same at eight forty-five, yet you're telling me it's not gonna keep it the same. And I understand about the assessment, that's not what's throwing me, it's the total dollar thing you're talking about.
Yeah, that, so if the assessment's gone up and you're, if the total assessment, citywide's gone up seven percent, and you keep the levy the same, total dollars will go up seven percent.
Right, okay, you're saying, just based on the assessment?
Right, yeah.
Does everybody wanna wait? Go wait.
Till next, I think I heard.
No, one word thing, it's time to take a break.
We do need, we just need to make sure we make a decision next week, Scott has to happen.
I mean, just because we decide what the maximum's gonna be, doesn't mean that's what we have to be, right?
That's true, it's just the maximum, it can come down.
Right. So, I mean, it's just.
Procedural.
Procedural, man.
Well, it's procedural, but it's also intended for transparency. That is supposedly the whole incentive behind the new law is transparency.
But Scott has to meet that deadline to have that public.
Right.
Yes, oh yeah.
And this year, there has to be two public hearings.
Yep.
So is by waiting a week gonna, is that gonna put you on a tighter timeline?
Nope, it'll work just fine.
Go wait, Vicky.
Okay.
Have we done the resolution until tomorrow?
Yes, but actually, no, because we're not setting that property tax dollars, we'll hold off on that resolution till next time.
Administrator, it worked?
Just a couple things on our library bid letting. We were letting bids on that on the thirtieth, so it's, what is it, a week from Thursday? We'll let bids on that, two o'clock here at City Hall, and we got four contractors who are looking at that project, so hopefully we get some good competition out of that, and I plan to take vacation for sure, I've got airline tickets bought for February twentieth through the twenty-fifth.
Well, you better have the best of them.
Yeah, it'll get done, yeah, you betcha.
That's it?
Yep.
Motion to adjourn, second?